We're going to go back on with our meeting, so as soon as the scouts are done with their picture. Thank you. Next, we have I-4, which is the Financial Administration Services Agreement with Darling and Associates CPA. I'll move the resolution. Do we have a second to the resolution for financial -- pardon?
For our I-4?
I-4.
Support, no support?
Seconded by Councilman Slater that we approve the resolution for temporary engagement with Thomas Darling, managing partner of Darling and Associates CPA, and the terms set forth in the attached proposal discussion. Mr. Zerlag, when I read the attached proposal, I was amazed at the low cost that he is charging us, given what the going rate is for that kind of service. I think that he really loves Troy and he's doing us a favor. Is that true, or is it just that I'm off on the numbers?
No, that's true. When I initially spoke with Mr. Darling, his standard rate is $150 an hour, and he agreed to bill us at $95 an hour.
Yeah. I think that I appreciate him doing that. I also remember when he was with Raymond Rapsin and did our audits, how thorough he was, and I still -- and I do remember when some people had some questions for him. He really, you know, knows his stuff.
Yes, with the departure of Mr. Lamorato and then subsequently Mr. Nash, almost two weeks, two and a half weeks later, it became imperative for me to find someone that knows, that is familiar with the financial mechanics of the city of Troy. And as you mentioned, Mr. Darling was the lead auditor for the Raymond Group for about, you know, for the city of Troy, for about four or five years. I've contacted, I've made contact with the Raymond Group just to make sure there would be no conflict and was advised that there will not be. Our lead auditor now, Gary, I forgot his last name, said that he's looking forward to working with Mr. Darling on the audit.
Further discussion of this item? Council? Councilman Horlack?
Yes, just curious, how many different quotes did we get? How many contacts did we make when we were looking at hiring Mr. Darling?
Zero. I needed someone that was familiar with the mechanics of the organization, and the only lead auditor that I was aware of was Mr. Darling that was on his own, that did work in the city of Troy before.
Do we think this will take the entire three months, or may it actually end up being shorter?
I'm not sure how long the audit process is going to take. I'm looking primarily at this point of hiring a controller. I'm going to be downgrading Mr. Nash's position, who did a great job for us, to be that of a controller. And as far as Mr. Lamorato's position is concerned, I'm going to wait on that to get a sense on what specifically are the needs of the organization before advertising for that position.
What is your timeframe for that? Or is that something that perhaps you're going to be in consultation with Mr. Darling about?
I'll be in consultation with Mr. Darling, as well as Peggy Sears, our HR director. So I would say that it'll be several months before I fill or decide what to do with Mr. Lamorato's position. It does need to be filled in some capacity. And a shorter time window for the position of controller. And then I'll be talking with Mr. Darling, well, I see Mr. Darling daily. And, well, I'm sorry, the days that he's here, he's here three days a week. And we'll jointly, you know, he'll make a recommendation to me as to how things are going with the audit. I'm essentially going to turn that over to Mr. Darling, as well as our head accountant, Lisa Burns, to work with the auditors. Time of the year, as you know, is critical to get certain things done, and it does take a while.
Definitely a big job. I guess my only concern is that, is the process of getting to this result. And, you know, I'm very much a stickler with going through the process and getting, at the very least, additional quotations or sending it out for bid. And since this is going to be perhaps even indefinite, I think it's even more important. If this ends up being a longer-term engagement, I would hope that at some point we look at actually, just for the sake of trying to be consistent with the guidelines in the charter, having something to compare this to. I think that the end result, I think the person is not the issue, it's really the process.
And that's an excellent point. From my perspective, the end result is an employee to the city of Troy. And I needed this interim measure to get us through an audit, as well as to get someone familiar with the mechanics financially of the organization. And again, the end result will be a competitive recruitment through our HR department. And so that we'll have essentially an employee for a budgeted position.
Further discussion of the item?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Potem Curwen?
Just have something really tangential, but I hope that I may go ahead and talk to the manager about this. It seems like you're going to be coming to a number of hires. And I noticed that sometimes you go ahead and make the hire, and then sometimes it comes towards us, and I'm kind of trying to figure that out. I know that when ICMA recommended having a change agent, that you offered a contract to Monica Ireland, who has great experience and does a great job. I appreciated that. I think that what happened last week in terms of hiring then came before us, and I kind of began to feel like I was in the weeds on some of this. We've given you a what, and that is, you know, run the city, fill the department so that they're competently running, and so on. And the how really is managerial work. Do you agree with that?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay. So for some of those things, I imagine you're going to go ahead and do?
That's correct.
Okay.
And to give an example, if, say, Mr. Lamorato stayed and Mr. Nash left, this wouldn't even be a topic of discussion. We would just make things work through John. Or if Jim would have stayed, I'd have made things work through Jim with John leaving, and we'd have gone through a standard recruitment process. But with both of them leaving, I had to get someone here in a hurry, and someone that knew the process of our audit. And Mr. Darling, having been the lead auditor for the Raymond Group, and he's been in contact previously and knows on a first-name basis, Gert Perisgavin, our IT director, he knows Steve Cooperiter, our risk manager, he knows Lori Bloom, our city attorney. And that was very helpful to me as manager, because by losing Mr. Lamorato, in addition to my existing direct reports, I now have all of Mr. Lamorato's direct reports coming to me, because I didn't want to burden Mr. Darling with the managerial aspect of the organization, so he can concentrate primarily on the finances of this. But you're definitely correct, and I appreciate you giving me a chance to clarify this. As manager, I can essentially hire anyone I want. There are certain administrative positions, the treasurer, the clerk, the assessor, that require confirmation by the city council. And if I make, as an example, with, oh, pardon my voice, Elaine, I have the authority to make her acting city clerk. When it's time to, if she passes her probation, does a great job. When it's time for her to be city clerk and she gets her certification, I'll make a recommendation for council to confirm that appointment. On the other hand, I recently lost Stu Alderman, who replaced Carol Anderson as recreation director about, you know, and he was, Stu only had the position for about two months. And we had moved over Jeff Bigler to superintendent of streets. I could do that without any intervention by city council. Since Stu left, Mr. Bigler indicated to me that he wanted to go back to the recreation department. He is certified in that regard. And so I took, you know, I spoke to Steve, I'm sorry, I spoke with Mark Miller and Tim Richnack, and wanted to help the employee. And so I put Jeff Bigler back in the recreation department, because he essentially was a co-director for a number of years with Carol Anderson. I don't need city council approval to do that. And now I've got to fill the superintendent of streets position.
Right.
But I appreciate that.
So regarding the day-to-day and making sure that that operation goes, that's your, those are your calls?
Right. In fact, Mr. Darling was on his own. I could have hired him as a temporary employee without coming to city council, but he does have his own company.
Right. I appreciate that clarification, because I think it's important for the citizenry to know, too, that city council is a policy-setting body and except in instances, which you indicated, where we have to ratify your appointments. The only two positions that we deal with are the city manager appointment and the city attorney appointment. Everything else is under your purview, and under city attorney, it's under Ms. Bloom's purview. So I think that's important for citizenry to know that, and, you know, we need to remember that we're policy setters. Okay, any other, on this particular item, which is I-4? Okay, Mrs. Bittner, the vote?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Horlack?
No.
Mayor Potem Curwen?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-5 is the application regarding transfer of a club license for Claussen Troy Alx Lodge 2169, pending final inspections. There's A and B here. Could we have a resolution for A and B?
Madam Mayor, I'll move A and B as presented.
Bucking.
Moved by Mayor Potem Curwen, seconded by Councilman Horlack. We approve A and B, the transfer club license and the agreement as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Horlack?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Curwen?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-6 is the 2010-11 Budget Amendment Number Two.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Potem Curwen?
We resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves the 2010-11 Budget Amendment Number Two as submitted, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Do we have a second?
Word.
Moved by Mayor Potem Curwen, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilman Horlack?
Just a question about the Planning Department contractual services. Have, is it that we need to actually spend this, or have we already spent the additional monies?
I believe the monies have already been spent.
Mrs. Miller?
It is correct.
Yes, it has been spent.
I guess my primary concern with that is, would it be possible before there's a expenditure in excess of the budget that we have the amendment? So that we can actually stay within budget?
Mrs. Zerlag?
I'd like to say yes, but I'm not sure of the mechanics involved in terms of when records are reconciled, if they're monthly or quarterly. Perhaps Mr. Nash can help me shed some light on this.
Mr. Nash?
Yes, mayor and council, the state law provides that the budget may be legally amended during the year, during any time during the year. As Mr. Zerlag indicates, ideally, we'd like to do it beforehand, but we are always monitoring where we're at, and we make sure that we don't have a serious situation. We have done more than two budget amendments in a year on a couple of occasions, but historically, we've done this in June, when we have a pretty good feel for the whole year.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Potem Curwen?
Perhaps Mr. Nash will comment, and perhaps Councilmember Horlack actually knows, but under Gasby, how does Gasby view when you have multiple budget amendments over the course of the year? Does that become a concern?
Mr. Nash?
I would not speak to it as a concern. Logistically, it makes it more difficult for the auditors to track from the beginning approved budget through the number of changes during the year. It would add a little bit more audit analysis. But it could be done. It's just, historically, we've always, in November, after the audit is completed, we look at the capital projects funds. We see which ones were, had unexpended funds, and we typically do that in the first budget amendment. And then this budget amendment in June, we address the other situations. This is actually somewhat lighter than some of the previous June budget amendments have been. I believe last year, we had to address an issue in the refuse fund. We think that that one's going to be okay this year. And in the general fund, with the concessions and reductions in staff, there's some under-budget situations that are more prevalent than they had been in the past.
Mr. Zerlag?
Thank you. Moving forward, I'll speak with Lisa Burns, our head accountant, Tom Darling, and whenever we get a controller onboard, to see about if we can have as an objective a amendment every six months. See what that'll take. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Horlack? Okay, the vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Horlack?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Curwen?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
And Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-7 is the agreement between the city of Troy and the Troy Nature Society for programming at the Lloyd A. Stage Nature Center.
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
I will move the resolution as printed. Support?
Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we approve the resolution with the agreement between the city of Troy and the Troy Nature Society for Programming at the Lloyd A. Stage Nature Center as printed in the resolution. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Council, Mayor Potem Curwen?
It was so nice to hear from a couple members of the council who have, who were able to recite some of the wonderful accomplishments that have already been done. And this has been done rapidly and well, and all for the intent of the education of our Troy residents and for the continuation of programs, which is really nice to see. I was glad to hear when Mr. Reagan presented, when he actually iterated some of those things, like removing the invasive species, which are a concern on that property, and having the trails ready for those who can walk, and most importantly, bringing back some of the programs. And so hats off to this, to the TNS. And you can find out more information linked from our website and become a member, which I think is well deserved. And I think there's a real sense of pride for the membership and for this community. And hats go off to all of you who've worked really hard on this.
I'm pleased that this agreement is before us, because it's been evident from the beginning that there are people in this community that truly love the nature center. And many of those who are part of the society worked to have the nature center develop. The building is developed and the programs. And so that love carries on and through their hard work. And we do appreciate all of those efforts. And I think that the citizenry that avail themselves of that truly know the significance. And I know other communities also wish that they had such a beautiful nature center. We're very fortunate. Anyone else? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Horlack?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Curwen?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Next is I-8, which is an approval of a communication strategy, RFP. And we have option A and option B that is before us, and option C, A, B, and C. Councilmembers, what's your pleasure on this? I do know that if we had funds available and we had the prerogative to do so, there would be people that we could put back into the community affairs department that could take on those responsibilities. But because of declining funds, we have not done that. And so when we look at this, even though people look at the amounts and they say that's expensive, I think actually it's quite inexpensive compared to what would occur if we had staff, because we'd have all the other costs involved, the legacy costs, et cetera. It's sad that we don't have our own in-house people, who are very talented. But it is nice to know that there are possibilities for companies that, you know, that we could hire on a part-time basis, so. I don't know which resolution someone wishes to bring forward.
Madam Mayor, I'll move option B.
Do we have a second for option B?
I'll support it for purposes of discussion.
Moved by Mayor Potem Curwen, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve option B in this resolution. Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Potem Curwen?
As we were talking about last week when, oh, two weeks ago now, Councilmember Beltrini was here, and went back to, and if we'll turn to, vision statement and goals. That's really where this originated. And as we were asked from the city manager to start brainstorming the RFP, it all came back down to the vision, the statement, and the goals. And if he had at that time in February, as he did with the ICMA report, simply taken this, the what we want to done, and turned it over to a human, a how, then we would have been on our way to a, to a, one part of the communications. What he's talked about now, and I think it's important to recognize, is a comprehensive communication strategy. That it's just not part of this. It's not just the final goal, but all of the goals working together. And that's going to include some of those points about economic development and some of those comprehensive overhaul of looking at our website and all of those other means of communications that we haven't had. When you look at a salary for a year, what we're going to really be trying to do is get a lot of different experts in the field to develop a series of strategies where our communications can improve, where our sense of community can be built, and where we can attract and retain that business events investment, which we really, really desire. So that's why I put out there in order to attract this comprehensive expertise in that area. Option B.
Further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, I appreciate all the effort that was put into this RFP and the detail that purchasing went to. It really boils down to me on page 21 of that document, item number 11. What are we doing here to market Troy to retain and attract businesses and families? That's the key. And it's going to be a long time, really, before we can measure that. But when we look at what we're doing, that's the real emphasis for me. Everything that we're doing in this project, this marketing plan, has to retain and attract businesses and families. And that's the key. I don't know if $100,000 is maybe a little high for that. I would be more in favor of the $50,000 and see how much we could get, how much bang we can get for the buck with that.
My concern, I agree with what you're saying about families and businesses. And after all, the city of Troy government exists to serve the community. And the community means the people who live here and the people that work here and the people that come to do business, even if they don't own a business here, but they come here for things to serve them. I think that we'll get a better field of firms that will bid on this if it's at the $100,000 rather than at the $50,000. My concern is that some firms might not bid if it is less. And we'll have to see what we could get for that amount. And it may not be quite as high as $100,000, but I think that giving that parameter is a better field for getting what we need here. That's my viewpoint. I'm pleased to see that, again, as I said before, you've talked, you and I both have talked about the fact that we felt that communicating is important in the community. And so it's really more than marketing. You know, marketing is one term used. But I think the fact that facilitating the goals, working on the economic strategy is helpful, because as we know, it's going to take a while for things to really turn around completely. The latest article in Time Magazine, the June 20th issue, indicated that economists said that even though the recession supposedly has ended, it's going to take four years for it to get back to the level of what it was when it began. And so it's not going to be immediate, even though we've seen some glimmers of hope and we're certainly glad about the automotive industry. That's happened fast, but look what they had to go through to get there. Anyway, so I think the $100,000 is appropriate. Councilman Fyde?
Thank you, mayor. Another thought, I'm hoping that local businesses will get involved here and put in proposals as well. We don't necessarily need someone out of state or out of county to do this. I'm hoping that we've got local people that will take this seriously. They know Troy, they know Troy well, certainly qualified right here in town, that will step forward and give us proposals. And I'm hoping with that, we could do more with the $50,000 than soliciting someone from a distance at $100,000. So that was part of my thought process as well. Hoping local people would step up and do more for us than we'll get with someone outside the regional area.
We do have some firms right within Troy that have handled huge programs for the automotive industry and other companies. And they're located right here in Troy. So we'll see what we get with this. Any other comments on this one? Councilman Slater?
If I could ask Mr. Zerlag a question. The position of economic development, is that a position that's budgeted in the 11, 12 budget?
Yes.
And that's going to be vacant, at least?
Mark Miller wants to talk to me about that. But I, again, I do believe that there are positions that are not going to be filled and savings realized from the E-RIP program that could fund this. But the short answer is that Pam Valintex's position But the short answer is that Pam Valintex's position is budgeted and I'm not filling it at this time.
So $100,000 in those positions would be something that's being left vacant then?
In, in a myriad of positions, yes. Her position's vacant, Mr. Lamroddo's position is vacant at this time. There's, yeah, the Finance Department, yes.
Mayor, also?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, Councilman Slater?
It just seems to me that if we're going to get quality, we should err on the high side to, to attract quality. And if somebody wants to bid for the job and wants to bid lower, they have that, they certainly have that option to bid lower. And if there's a local company that, that wants to come forward and bid low to help us, I would encourage them to do that. But I think we, maybe we should set the bar high and give them an opportunity to bid low if that's, if that's something that they're looking to do. And we can always raise the bar a little bit, I think, in this particular instance.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman McGinnis?
And I have to say, I feel much more comfortable with this RFP being laid out. I know that this isn't really standard practice, that we would be at this involved in determining what's listed here. But I think when you're able to read through this and really break down what we're asking of someone to do, we only have one chance to do this the right way. So I would prefer to have it out on the table, what we're looking for a company to do, and then have the leverage for companies to be able to come in and give us an honest opinion of what they think it would cost for these things to be done. And, and we do retain the control of going through this process and having someone who have to answer a pretty in-depth set of questions in terms of what their experience level would be and, and what insight that they have on working on this particular project. So I feel much more comfortable going down this process. And I can see the rationale in allowing the bids to be, the budget to be slightly higher so that we can expand the pool of people that we can pick from.
Further discussion? The vote, Councilman Howlak?
Just a couple of comments on the actual RFQ and RFP. First is, there's a description here about years in business. And I would hope that we would actually consider individuals who have actually worked for firms that have been in business for that period of time. Because as you know, in that industry, a lot of people strike out on their own or they have a reorganization. I don't know that it's really necessary that the actual firm be in existence as long as that person has that experience. Also, I don't, I don't believe that public sector communications experience is necessary. What is necessary is that the proposal be appropriate to our specific situation. Somebody may not have specifically worked with the local unit of government, but may actually be able to put together a very good plan for us. Likewise, somebody may have worked in the public sector for a county or a state and not be able to appropriately draft a plan that would work for us. I would, I would hope that we could be a little bit more open-minded in that regard. I, I think that relatively easily, when, when the plans come in, we'll be able to tell if they, if they're going to work or not. Also, same thing with a minimum of three similar projects, unless it's three similar projects that aren't specifically government-related. Financial information, I don't know that's necessary, but whatever. Responses to questions, I hope that, it says it will be open or due seven days before the opening of the proposals. I would hope that the proposal, or I should say, I hope that this is advertised long enough so as to give a, an opportunity for as many qualified firms to approach the city. I'm concerned that the interview score of 40% might be a little high, but I'm not terribly concerned about that. It says that 40% of the final grade is based on the interview and 60% on the proposal. I would hope that the proposal would carry more than 60% because that's really where the meat of it is. The other concern that I have is that there's a strong emphasis, and this is one of the comments that I made at our last council meeting, there's a strong emphasis about the, you know, communication strategy to promote the government or to, or the, or the elected officials, the body of the city council, the breakdown of communication between the council and the residents. Honestly, that's one of those things that we individually have to answer for. But I think we need to actually make sure that the focus of this is on the City of Troy, especially as it relates to economic development, and not so much on promoting, you know, the government or trying to get people to agree to certain things that they may not have agreed to in the past by means of overly communicating with them and wearing them down. So those are my comments about the RFP because I think that's really what the issue was and why it was brought before us. But I think it's also important to get an actual number as well.
Further comments on this? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Howlak?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Next, we have our consent agenda. Are there any items that council wants removed, exempted?
Madam Mayor? J-4B.
Pardon?
J-4B.
J-4B. Mayor Protem Kerwin, any others? Okay, could we have a resolution approving all items except for J-4B?
Madam Mayor, resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item J-4B, which shall be considered after consent agenda items as printed.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Howlak, that we approve all the consent agenda items with this vote, except for J-4B, which we'll consider after this vote. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howlak?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item J-4B, Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Again, this is a grant, and one portion of the grant is used for a total station data collector. And I thought that perhaps our chief of police might inform us a little bit about how that is a benefit and fulfills our mission and meets some of the goals of the police department.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Mrs. Zurleg? Oh, he's here. Chief, do you want to do it from there or over here? Which one can we hear you better from? I think, doesn't this mic work a little bit better than that one over there sometimes? Besides that, we like it when you're front and center, Chief.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Chief Mayor?
Thank you for the opportunity. This total station is essentially a survey device that will assist our traffic safety officers and been able to, in a timely manner, gather all the evidence they need at traffic crash scenes. It'll allow us to cut our overtime costs. It'll allow us to work in conjunction with some of the other communities that are on our traffic crash team. All these fulfill our goals, the city goals of providing the quality service. It's going to increase the accountability of our employees, which is one of our police department goals, because the employees will be able to better collect the data and provide the service that we need. One of the other goals is emphasizing cooperation and teamwork. I mentioned that. We'll work with the other jurisdictions. And we're going to increase our employee participation in development, which is one of our goals, because the employers are going to use this device to deliver the service they're going to do. It's also noteworthy that this is from a grant, so it's at no cost to our citizens. $15,000 of this is from the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police in recognition for our traffic safety work.
Any other questions on this? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I move the resolution and was glad that we were able to have that opportunity to see again this grant award that came in recognition of the department work and will benefit not only the department, our employees, but the city's bottom line as well. Resolve that the City of Troy hereby authorizes the Troy Police Department to receive a Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police grant and expense city funds for the purchase of the total station data collector equipment, including necessary accessories from visual statements and to purchase four motorcycle radar units from Custom Signals Incorporated, as detailed in Appendix One, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting, for an estimated total cost of $17,438.35. Be it further resolved that the police department budget is hereby amended to receive the grant funding of $15,000 and that the remaining cost of the equipment in the amount of $2,438.35 will be paid from available funds in the police department operating accounts.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howlak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. You know what? Oh, council comments comes after. Okay, all right. Next, we go to memorandums. Anyone want to talk about those public hearings? Next, we have council referrals. I have two items, one that council had talked about previously, and we said with the beginning of the new fiscal year, we would do the regular routine performance evaluation of both the city manager and the city attorney. And so that's why those resolutions are here. And they talked about the dates among themselves to put those on here. So I'll move the Resolution A and B. Moved by the Chair, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we approve the resolution for a closed session for Monday, July 25, 2011, in the council boardroom for a purpose of a performance evaluation of the city manager pursuant to MCL 15.268A. And B, we approve the closed session for Monday, July 11, 2011, in the council boardroom for a purpose of performance evaluation of the city attorney pursuant to MCL 15.268A. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howlak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. L two is my request for a content neutral flyer for the August 2 election. And I sent an email to both Mr. Zurleg and Mrs. Bloom requesting this because in my recollection, every city council election ballot, excuse me, every city election, we have sent a content neutral flyer out to the citizenry. And so I asked that something be done so that we could do that for this one, to follow in the same precedent. So I'll move this resolution. Do I have a second?
Support.
Moved by the Chair, seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin. Resolve that the Troy City Council hereby approves the August 2, 2011 special election information proposed library mileage ballot question brochure, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting, and be further resolved that Troy City Council hereby direct city administration to mail the August 2, 2011 special election information proposed library mileage ballot question brochure to all Troy households. Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Fleming?
Reviewing the detail here, this, this is going to cost, again, over $12,000. An election is probably going to cost us $90,000. So already we're over $100,000 here. And, and when I read this, it, it, it says content neutral, but it doesn't appear to me, just reading this, as content neutral. It's basically pro library. And I think we all want to keep the library open, and we disagree on the ways to keep the library open. But to me, this doesn't appear, you know, content neutral.
Could I ask the city attorney with regard, the law with regarding it being content neutral? As I understand, we're not allowed to say vote yes or vote no, but we are allowed to provide educational material for the public? Mrs. Bloom?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Yes, you are permitted to use public resources to send out information to the residents so that they are better informed when there is a ballot question. But you are correct in that it needs to be factual. It cannot advocate or oppose a particular ballot question. You cannot use public monies to do that.
The other thing I wanted to ask, Mrs. Bittner, I don't know if you have the data or not, but the cost for the election, did that include a brochure? I know when we've asked Mrs. Bartholomew in the past, when she gave us a total and included everything that would be included in, and I don't recall if that included some kind of a flyer. Because this is just a one-page thing folded and mailed. And of course, mailing costs have gone up every year.
In the, in the past, the dollar amount that was given for the cost of an election would not have included a brochure.
Okay. That was simply the cost of running the election and the...
Personnel and supplies for an average election, not including any kind of proposal brochure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion on this item?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman McGinnis?
I spent quite a bit of time going over what was proposed. And I think that in terms of, it appears to be what the first page or the front page would be. I think it appears to be content neutral because it's basically just reiterating what the language is that's on the ballot and what has been indicated in terms of what a yes vote and what a no vote would be. I guess on the second page, I had some concerns in terms of some of the language. And I think that I've, I've come down to the, the conclusion that really we've got a lot of statistical information about the library. In fact, we've spent a lot of time looking over numbers. And those numbers include in general how many visitors that we have going to our library, the number we have materials that are in circulation, things that I think everyone would agree are facts. There have also been additional facts in terms of cuts that have already been made to the library, in terms of funding, the reduction in the number of hours, the reduction in the number of staff. And I think that it is our duty to educate the public so that they can make an informed decision regarding the election that's coming up on August 2. But in terms of the way that information is provided, I see here that we list a lot of services that are available at the library. And they're, they're wonderful services and they should be mentioned. And I think it's important for people to have those details. But I don't know if it could be presented in a way that just basically lists that information or directs them to the Troy Library website, which additionally lists that information. I just have a feeling that, you know, in a situation where words could potentially be picked apart, our best bet would be to list things simply as they are. And if that's numbers, circulation, reduction in hours, reduction in staff, the reduction in the budget that we've seen over the last year, and then list all of the services, list, you know, a place that they can find additional information in the library, which is through the city website. I think that might be a better way to go because it's informing them, people can take that information, and then they can utilize it to make whatever decision they want. I know that otherwise, every single word will be picked apart. And I just think that that would be a better way to present it. So I, I think that this needs to be done. I think part of our discussions have been that information needs to be provided from the city that people can rely on in terms of factual numbers. And I think if we're providing people with cold, hard facts about what services are available, what the reduction in services look like, then they can take... available, what the reduction in services look like, then they can take those facts and make a decision that they think is appropriate. I personally agree with everything on here, but I just don't really want to get into a battle of words, a battle of the words, and I think that it might be better suited if we just list things in terms of numbers.
Something could be added on this page that, asking them to go to the, that they could go to the website. Mrs. Bloom, would that be still considered in the content neutral if we added that, instead of printing all of the data and numbers, because all of that is on the library website?
Certainly, directing them to the webpage is very appropriate. Again, the webpage is subject to the same campaign finance restrictions in that you can't use public resources to promote or oppose a ballot question. So as long as it's content neutral, certainly, it's very appropriate to refer to the webpage.
Okay. So we could have something inserted which refers to, see the additional information, go to the library website, and then give the website there? Could that be on this page, then?
That could be wherever, if the question is to me, it can be wherever you want. You can enlarge other things if you wanted to eliminate that. You could certainly...
Well, I don't want to rework all of this at the table because I know there's a time factor involved here. And also, too, I think that it has to be balanced so, you know, that it's folded and, you know, readable. If you fool around with it too much, then it becomes not something that's easily folded and mailed. Further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
I don't want to rework it at the table either, but I share the same concerns about, you know, what is the cost of a proposed library millage for a homeowner is fine. But when we get to the second page, I think, I think we need to eliminate that to make it look more neutral. And I think the suggestion going to the webpage is a good idea, rather than printing that.
You're suggesting taking out that second, there's something for everyone at the Troy Public Library, and instead putting, please go to the website to see the factual...
Yes.
...numbers on the library?
Yes. To me, it jumped out that it was...
Okay.
It was pushing, pushing the library. We all know what a great library it is. I don't think it needs to be on an informational, that's my opinion.
Okay.
Also, I have a question. Are we restoring limited...
Pardon?
Are we restoring limited programming by passing this, this millage? If I could ask that question?
Uh...
The answer is yes.
I believe that is already on the library website. I was trying to think...
I'm just trying to clarify...
You want Mrs.?
Summer reading is back.
Okay. Do you want Mrs. Russ to indicate that, Councilman Slater?
I would.
Hello?
Hello.
Again.
At this point, we don't have that, so if we ask for this millage vote, we're going to restore that?
I want to be very clear, we're not restoring programming to the levels that they were at in 2009, or 2008, or 2007. What this would do is bring back some of the most popular programs. The most prevalent example is children's storytimes. We really don't have those on a, on a regular basis. It's basically, if we can have a library science intern run a six-week program, we do that, and just one. We used to have a storytime for every age, and in the morning, and the afternoon, and in the evening, we'd have family storytime. We even had police officers come and read to kids sometimes. We haven't done that in, in a long time. So we would restore the storytimes. We would have enough money in the budget to do that. What I would then look into is bringing back some of the more popular adult programs and teen programs, and maybe running them on a limited basis. The program schedule would certainly not be as robust as it was last year or two years ago, but we would be able to bring back some programs.
If the millage passes and the library is funded with dedicated funding for five years, would there be discussion with the Friends of the Troy Public Library about them restoring programs that they funded, that they were not funding at the present time?
Yes, the Friends of the Library have historically paid for the costs of all the programs. What was involved on the library side was staff time.
Right.
The staff time in setting up the program and running the program. The programs that we have right now, the Friends are funding those programs, but they are also funding the cost of the staff time. And so as our staff has diminished, or programs have diminished because, you know, our staff has stretched thin, and when it comes down to it, I would rather have them working on a desk than teaching a class that the Friends are paying for. Should the millage pass, we can do both. We can, because we can hire, as I mentioned before, we went from 70 staff members, now we're down to 56. Even just restoring those 14 positions that we lost would go a long way to restoring some more library services.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Did you have another question? I'm sorry.
I do for...
Mayor Potem Curwen?
And I have a comment for Dame, but specifically for Director Russ. It says, "No vote means that the Troy Public Library will close by Friday, August 12, 2011." Could you in fact close it sooner than August 12? It seems like that August 3 to...
The library can close when...
When would you feel most...
Someone tells me to close it.
I know that you would be checking in books, but what kind of date would you be able to actually close it, should this not?
Well, I mean, I'm at the will of the city manager, and if he tells me to close the library August 3, the library is closed August 3. I think what's important to keep in mind is that the longer the library stays open, if the library is open, materials are being checked out.
People there.
On August 2, which is the Tuesday of the election, anything checked out on Tuesday, August 2, will be due on Tuesday, August 23. So bearing in mind that money is coming from fund balance to fund the library if the millage fails, personally, I would not think you want to keep the library open for a very long time because as the due dates roll on, it takes the staff longer to close, actually close the library.
Mr. Zurlag, you wanted to add something?
Sure. Kathy, Russ and I spoke about this specifically, and the August 12 date was reasonable from my perspective, as well as Kathy's, and I gave Kathy the discretion, based upon workload and traffic flow, that she had the authority to close it before August 12, that she felt comfortable and would just advise me at that point.
I suppose since it's going to every household, I'd like to be as accurate as possible. If it's possible that she says she could close it by, say, August 5 or something like that, I think it would be accurate to put that on this piece, by August 5.
Again, we spoke about the 5th, we spoke about the 12th, and I'm not going to micromanage Kathy. Do you have a preference of a date, one over the other?
I actually think the 5th is a good date because, again, that closes down, I mean, it closes down the library's operations for the public and gives the staff a chance to start closing down the library internally. The longer, again, the longer it goes on, the longer it's going to take the staff to close it down, and the longer people have to come in and take out materials and possibly not return them.
Okay, and I have, anything else? I do, I have one more follow-up, and it's two questions that have been brought up here and there. Instead of there's something for everyone at the Troy Public Library, I think that makes us all a little uneasy. I do agree with Councilmember McGuinness that there are some fast facts about the Troy Public Library, with more that could be garnered from the website. And they are just a series of facts, not so much what we see here. I agree with everyone who said probably not the big, bold print that's sitting up there right now, but fast facts about the Troy Public Library, including some, and those would-be numbers, how many visitors on an annual basis, how many collection items are checked out annually. Some of those, those things would make sense, because those are just fast facts, but some of the softer things, the library is green, it's nice, but it's, numbers would be better, I think, if one were to include. It doesn't have to be a lot. And then, for more information, visit. But I think a different, I think that has to be deleted, the big, bold language. There's something for everyone.
What would be the turnaround on this, then, if we approve tonight with the changes about taking out this section and instead putting in some fast fact numbers, which we've already had before from the website, and for more information, visit the website, putting that in that section? Could that be done in the next day or so, and then this could be done?
It'd be done tomorrow.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But the question becomes, do you want to have a special meeting to review it, or just want to have staff send it out?
As long as it's just those...
Fast facts.
...numbers, I don't see that that's going to change anything. Those numbers are already, we all know all those from the, we have seen them on the library website. I don't know that it has to come back again.
Your call.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Potem Curwen?
We do have a meeting tomorrow, I mean, with businesses from 10 to something. Perhaps we could even see something and ascertain a level of comfort with it after that.
But when I said tomorrow, I meant like maybe 3 o'clock, but...
I would leave it up to staff.
Okay. I really don't want to press Kathy...
I know it's going to be something that is content neutral and just those numbers, and that the city attorney and the city clerk aren't going to want to send out something that doesn't meet the standard of the law.
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
I'm just not in favor of, what's the purpose of this? Okay?
The flyer?
Yeah, what's the purpose of the flyer? The purpose of the flyer is to be neutral and tell the people what the election's about.
Yes.
That's all we should do.
Right.
That's my opinion. We're not here to tell them what the fast facts are about the library. There's certainly a lot of places you can go to get that information. I'm only agreeing to put this out because we've done it in the past, and I think we should do it, if we've done it every other time, we should do it this time, no matter what, what we're doing. But the purpose is to put out a neutral informational brochure about what the election's about, nothing else, in my opinion. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of putting anything else other, other than this on there.
So taking out the box on the second page and just putting, for more information, see the Troy Library website?
I'm okay with that, personally.
Okay, all right.
Do I have to amend the resolution that we've amended the body, the form, because it says a copy of which shall be attached to the original part of the meeting? We're changing the...
Two things.
Two things, the date from 12 to 5, and then taking out the box and putting in, see the website?
For further information about the library?
Right.
Visit this website.
Right. Mrs. Bittner?
The resolution hasn't been resolved yet, it's still in discussion, so you could make those changes and then vote on it as...
Okay. All right, I think, are we in agreement on the changes from the 12th to the 5th, and then taking out the box completely and putting, for more information, the Troy Public Library, see the website and put what the website is?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, Councilman Fleming?
And based on the timing, this can't wait until the next meeting, which is July 11?
No.
What's the drop-dead timing for getting this out?
This week.
Rep. Inty ballots are ready.
I really wasn't comfortable with this, and I don't think others were either, and really like to see it, but...
If I may, all that you can envision essentially is the ballot question, what a yes vote means, what a no vote means, it's August 5. What's the cost will still be on there. And then, instead of having there's something for everyone at the Troy Public Library, we'll say, for further information about the Troy Public Library, please see the following website, and then have City of Troy election dates to remember.
Right.
And that's it.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
That's it. It may be bigger font to cover a page, to make it more artistically, you know, pleasing, but that would be it.
Okay. Mrs. Stewart, you came out, did you want to add something?
I can do it up tomorrow morning, I can revise it and have it for you before your 10 o'clock.
Cindy, there's nothing to revise, with the exception of what I just mentioned.
No, I know, I mean, I can, but I have to take all that stuff out.
But we can envision that here.
All right. And the point is that, since we're having a special meeting, we are not allowed to have other items other than what the meeting was...
Called for.
Posted for. So that was my other thing I was going to bring up, too, so. I think, I mean, it's not like we're adding, we're subtracting, actually, so.
Okay.
Okay, Mrs. Bittner? Oh, Councilman...
Mayor?
Councilman Howelak? Who was first?
Mayor, I was just going to add that, that first paragraph I find to be very unpalatable because it says, "As a result of months of community conversations," well, that's true, "a citizen survey," well, that happened, "and many other public engagement strategies, it became clear that Troy residents wanted a vote on whether to keep the Troy Public Library in operation." Well, you could say the direct opposite, and that would be true, too. There are people on both sides of that issue. "As a result of this, Troy City Council authorized the following question," well, that's true. My concern, I guess, is with the part where it says, quote, "It became clear that Troy residents wanted a vote on whether to keep the Troy Public Library in operation."
We could change it to say, "As a result of months of community conversations, a community survey, and many other public engagement strategies, Troy residents are given a chance, are given an opportunity to vote on whether to keep the Troy Public Library in operation." Would you be satisfied with that?
No.
I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's needed. I don't think that this paragraph is needed. But what we actually did was we offered a tax item, whatever you want to call it, tax increase, tax item, dedicated mill levy, that would provide additional funding for the library.
And, yes, and that's what it says in the actual wording for the ballot. City Council would be authorized to levy 0.7 mills for dedicated library funding with the successful passage of the following question.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Potem Curwen?
Truth is, none of this really would be before the people if it weren't for the communication...
Right.
...that was done through the community conversations and the citizen survey. That really is true. It was slated to close. There was no bridge, there was not going to be any more votes. It was because of a number of different communications that we had with residents that they said. This point about, had there been votes for the Troy Public Library? No. There had been one for an independent library, there had been a general operating millage. People had come forward and said that this is what they wanted. So this language, to me, is declarative. I understand Councilmember Howelak disagrees, but we've gotten rid of the whole basket. I think this is, is a true picture of what happened. It was slated to close.
Mayor?
He was indicating the wording, "It became clear that Troy residents wanted a vote." And so I offered a change, that it be Troy residents are offered the opportunity, offered an opportunity to vote on whether to keep the Troy Public Library in operation. Councilman Howelak?
I was just going to add that, you know, if you want to make it, you know, if you want to nuance words and make an argument for this paragraph because you're so in love with it, that's fine. But if you want to find something that's truly content neutral, that, you know, you cannot empirically support the statement that it became clear that Troy residents wanted a vote on whether to keep the Troy Public Library in operation. There's no data to support that. It's a feeling that some people have that that is the case. And how, and what vote is it? This is, you know, one could say the Ed Kempen vote. I mean, my gosh. So in order to actually make this something that we can all find more palatable, all I'm saying is, if you, if you say something along the lines of, "The city council decided as a result of these steps that they had taken to communicate with the public, to put forward a dedicated mill levy for the library to increase revenue, to assist in library operations," something along those lines, then it, you know, that's, that's what we did, or the majority of this council did.
Have we made those changes? Councilman Howelak, would you be voting in favor of this resolution?
That, that would make it less, I would be more inclined to be comfortable with it at that point. There's one other issue. There's one other issue, and that's the, the issue with a no vote means that the Troy Public Library will close by Friday, August 5th, 2011. And I would add the words unless the city council amends its budget, because that's a true statement.
Further discussion on the item that's before us? Further discussion? Mrs. Bitner, the vote?
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Councilmember Howelak?
No.
Mayor Potem Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
And Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes, and that's with the two changes that we originally made. Council comments. I'd like to indicate, in case some of you haven't seen it or didn't, didn't know about it, that July 13th, I will be doing a State of the City address for the residents at the Troy Community Center at 7:00 PM. Several communities do this after the beginning of the new fiscal year, which is July 1st, and so that's why I've chosen that time instead of the traditional February time. And it is for the residents in the evening, free, and it was in the Somerset Gazette, and I think it's going to be in the Troy Times. I see Terry O'Park is here, she's shaking her head. And it'll give us, give me a chance to update the residents on what's been happening during the year and some things going forward. So I wanted to comment about that to all of you, and of course, you're all invited. Are there other council comments on items? Oh, we have our meeting tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM in the council boardroom with a special meeting for economic, what is it, roundtable?
Yes.
It's part of the economic roundtables that Mr. Zerlag regularly has with businesses once a month or something, and this one, the council is having to be there, too. Further council comments?
Madam Mayor.
Council, Mayor Potem Curran?
Yes, to that point, too. Were there, for the manager, were there questions submitted tonight by council members? Because I didn't see anything on the table.
No.
Okay. I know there had been, that tomorrow's date for some businesses wasn't ideal. We just picked three, and that one was good for us, but not necessarily good, and perhaps not a quorum of council, but if business, if there are people in the business community that would like to have casual conversations, I think it would be great to do a kind of community conversation business matters. And also, if schedules could be arranged for those interested, community conversations, library matters. I know there have been some subdivisions, and there have been some church groups who have been interested in hearing, both from elected leaders and from library, the library director or our staff available. I know that we had a series when we did community conversation, whomever could come, as long as it was fewer than a quorum, we didn't know, but I know that we're all skillful and, and the advocates who are, who are out there, I think it would be beneficial to continue our community, community conversations for, for the different groups, and again, they're open to everyone, should be posted and included on the website and then also in our local papers. But I would be very interested in, in having calendar selections so that we could all tell what we would be available to, to do if there were people interested.
Sure, we'll make that happen. In fact, it'll be the charge of Beth Tashnick on the general assignments, and Cindy and Stewart and Kathy Russ will help on the library matter. I'll put Mark Miller, who already knows this, in charge of the, the businesses to see what we can have, have, those folks that have an interest. And we've started essentially, we're starting tomorrow with the full, full Board of City Council. You'll get an idea of what the businesses talk to me about, and see if you want to do something more formal, or informal, or both.
It's just good to build relations, you know, to become...
Absolutely.
And, and to show our intent and our interest.
Sure.
Thank you.
As well as their view of what Troy should look like.
Absolutely.
Any other council comments? We do have a closed session, so we're in recess. We'll reconvene in the other room in the closed session.